All right. Okay, so I think we can probably wait maybe a few more minutes to get a few more people in. All right. Hi Darlene.
Congratulations on a smooth upgrade to the 2.9. That was great having it done before noon.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're just, we're smoothing down a few little kinks, but I think overall, or overall, we're pretty well. I mean, talk about some of that as well today.
Brent, do we have somebody that's going to take care of the minutes after the meeting?
Oh, we do not.
Do you want me to do that?
If, if you are offering your services, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, I figure since you're chairing, I don't want you to have to do minutes too. So I will listen to the recording and get some minutes together.
Okay, thank you Beth. Was able, was everyone that's on right now able to get the staff link? Or link to the new staff client all right?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, there were a few that didn't seem to get the message through the listserv that I had to help the following day, days. But that's just a communication issue.
Yeah, I think it might be good maybe after this. I mean, I don't think it's maybe a circulation issue, but just to email the libraries to have a list of contacts they'd like all added to the listserv in case, you know, maybe someone who is, is signed up for that listserv doesn't show up for work that day that they still get the message.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, um. Hello Amanda, this is Brent.
Hello.
Hi.
Sorry, making sure everything's working.
Yeah. Okay, so everyone's all right, I think I might just start. So this is the first meet, or the newest meeting of the circulation committee. I'm Brent Mills, the new chair of the circulation committee. And I think, so if everyone just kind of, that's online right now, just briefly maybe say your name and which library you're with.
We should probably go by the order listed in the attendees to make it a little more orderly.
Okay, so we have, we have Beth Longwell. Okay, so Beth is the system manager.
Sorry, I was on mute. I'm the systems manager.
And I'm Brent Mills, I'm also Sage Library System and Brent Mills Sound in this attendee list. And I think we have Amanda Sinifat.
Sinifat, Amanda Sinifat. That's okay, the assistant librarian at the Vail Emma Humphrey Library.
Hello. It looks like we have Heidi as well. She's a, she's muted, but I think that's Heidi Florzin from Hermiston. I guess yes on that. Oh, yep, there she is in chat. And we have Janet Coda. Okay, it looks like.
Janet is from the Vail High School.
Okay. Joyce McCurdy from Ontario, I believe.
Yeah, and Darlene is with her.
Okay. We have Maura.
From Penn.
Hi Maura.
Hi.
All right.
And I'm Perry Stokes, Library Director for Baker County.
And we have Rachel from Hood River County, Assistant Director. Okay.
Hey Brent, is that your cat that we hear in the background?
Oh gosh, it could be. I had tried to lock the door, but they've, I don't think they're upstairs.
It was a lovely meow coming from.
Oh yeah, he was trying to get on my lap, but that's bad idea right now. Okay, and so I think for the next circulation committee meeting, I don't remember the last time these were active, but is this something that would probably be a monthly or a bi-weekly type meeting?
Brent, in the past, we've done bimonthly, so every other month.
Every other month.
But that's obviously something that we can evaluate going forward.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't mind, you know, this is the day that everyone on the poll seemed to indicate that they had the most availability. So I wouldn't mind at the very least having it maybe every, the, every other 13th or every other, you know, what is this, second Wednesday, third Wednesday?
Having a consistent day of the week is nice for the meetings. And maybe there's enough on our agenda that for a while we want to meet once a month and then it could taper off.
Yeah, I'd be, I would be all right with that if everyone else is okay with meeting every month.
Sounds good to me.
Maybe every third Wednesday? At least for now, tentatively.
That's fine with me, sounds good.
So the next one would be February 17th. For the next one. Okay.
Is it the third, this is the second Wednesday?
Second, oh yeah. Yeah, January 1st was on a Friday, yeah. So we can do maybe the 10th then? Okay. All right, so let's launch into this here, I don't want to keep everyone here too long and we've got some stuff to, a lot of stuff to touch on and probably a few other things. Oh yeah, at the same time as well, thank you Joyce. Okay, so as, I'm pretty sure everyone by now is aware, we upgraded to Evergreen 2.9.1, which is the most bleeding edge Evergreen release right now, it's the most current. It seemed to go pretty well, there were, the main issues were at least right away with a few, just kind of templating mismatches and making sure that we had all our customizations back in, which if anyone notices those down the road or now, I would, I'm trying to look into it as much as I can, but everyone working at the circ desk will probably see more than I do, so I'd be happy to get an email or ticket about that along with, to the Sage ticket site. So with the new features we have, we did a two point hello?
Hello, it's Janil.
All right.
From Vail, hi.
Okay. Okay, so with the upgrade on the kind of upgrade page on sagealib.org, I mentioned a few highlights. There are a lot of changes, but a lot of them are not so spectacular to mention. Janil, maybe could you mute your microphone if you're not really talking?
What's, I can hear you, you can't hear me very well?
Oh no, I think when you're not talking, if you wouldn't mind just muting your microphone?
Absolutely, let me see where.
So when we jump to 2.8, we are able to delete shelving locations a little easier. That was a bit of a problem before. And now it's a lot easier to just go through and mark those deleted. You don't have to dance around with any of the circulation information in the backend, which is good. The age protection now uses the active date, so when a library or when a copy moves from in process to re-shelving or available, that's the active date for the item, which I think is a better representation of when that actually occurs.
Yeah, now the active date was working before, it's just the display came with 2.8, there were some added features, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And probably the, which floated over to 2.9 is we have better handling of bills as well as lost item issues, which are kind of the meat of most of kind of billing related problems. And so there's an option to not charge fines on a fully paid item transaction now, which means if somebody had a lost item that they paid all their money for, it will zero out that transaction and not allow it to be voided or returned if the item comes back later, which really helps. And that's also, yeah, with this lost item returned and credit applied to patron account issue. So if there's any libraries that like to try that out, or if some might think that would be something that would be a Sage-led setting that could be good, I would, Beth and I would definitely like to hear about that.
So if I understand right, are you saying that you can set a certain period of time after which it wouldn't be eligible for return for credit?
Yeah, and this, it also just basically as soon as the item is paid in full, it won't it won't return those fine, like if you return the item, it won't kind of generate those negative credits on the accounts. Yeah.
Basically, it's just a setting that once the person's paid for the book, if they end up finding it, we have the option to not return the money back to them with this setting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that, that may depend, differ according to, you know, however the library has its practices. We allow return up to, I think, six months afterwards for credit.
Yeah, and there is a separate setting for that in the system as well, so each library can set those time periods themselves, you know, have unique settings for those.
Yeah. And then, and that also, there's more to talk about that in 2.9, but with the 2.8, we also got a message center, which is, which I can kind of show right here. I've got Hood River's test patron up, Paige Bookman. And what you would do is if you maybe want to add a note to the patron, you know, in the past, this could be, this was only for staff to see, even though this tag was there as well. So I could say something like please come get your holds. And this creates a note in two different places. So when I mark that patron visible, add the note, all staff will be able to see it here and this will never cat, this will never get deleted by the patron, it'll always stay there until the staff member takes it away. But now if a patron logs into their accounts, they will see this new messages tab with a kind of red highlight next to it, indicating that there is a new note from them from the staff member. So if they click on that, they'll see a new message from their library. You know, with please come get your holds, or whatever you've mentioned on there. This could be good if you want maybe the patron to, their email needs to be corrected, or you have something else you'd like to relay to them. And the patron themselves then, after they've read it, can either mark it or delete it. If they delete that message, it's gone from their account, but it will still show up in their account when you access it through the staff client. So that's kind of one new feature that's been implemented. And, let's see, sorry.
Brent, is that messages tab the same place that the expiration notice will be?
Oh, that, yeah, sorry, and I can get to that too, the while you're here, the messages tab is just a separate tab to bring up this section. But if the patron just logged in and went to their My Account, like it would default to when you log in, you'll see the expiration date right there. So.
Well, I read that there is a 30-day notification about it.
Yeah, and I was gonna.
Coming up for expiration.
Yeah, I was gonna touch on that a little bit later in the talk, but yeah. Okay. But I guess since we're, we're already in here, I can just mention it pretty quickly too. It's not enabled by default right now, but let's see. So we have a new 30-day account expiration courtesy notice, which can be set at a Sage level, kind of like our normal pre-dos are, the three-day-before-do notices. Or it can be set at a library level too, if you want to customize the message. But what this will do is 30 days before a patron's account is about to expire, they will receive an email to their to their email address on file with the title, courtesy notice, library account expiration in 30 days. And then it will send them this message indicating that they can talk to their library about renewing their account. And I think this will be a good addition for kind of keeping accounts unexpired and you know, just increasing the conversation between the library and the patrons to know when, you know, their account actually will expire instead of just having it expire and come in and renew renew their account. So that is a new option we have available. Which I think would be good to set, I don't see really the, I don't think it would too much overwhelm patrons with messages, seeing as how they probably get it once every, you know, hopefully once every three years. If they're doing the default, but.
I think we should set it at the Sage level.
That was my feeling. Does anyone have any opinions on that, would they not want this email going out, or have any thoughts about it?
I think it sounds like a great idea, and you'll miss people who have changed their email addresses, but you'll get a lot of people in to renew their accounts before they, you know, can't log into library to go or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. And so yeah, let's go back to that, we have kind of better deletion of parts now for catalogers, it's a little easier to delete things and not break holds as well as merge parts on a record that has maybe two separate parts that mean the same thing, but they need to be kind of aggregated in the same part title. That happens a lot easier now and it won't break holds that are on those parts or throw those nasty network errors. You can place multiple title holds now if you're a staff member, which can be good for book clubs or other times where a library needs to select multiple holds on the same title. We have some authority fixes in, which I know Beth's pretty excited about.
I am.
As excited as people can be about authority records, I guess, which will help kind of manage our existing authority records as well as making sure that we're not duplicating records we already have in there. So, mentioned the 30-day account expiration notice. On the backend, we're now caching the templates, which just basically means in the staff client as well as the website, when you go to certain pages like this, or browse the catalog, those are stored in a static state in the backend, unless Beth or myself go and make any changes. And that will help improve response time and yeah, just generally make things a little snappier when you're jumping through the different tabs and search screens, kind of to make static content on Evergreen a little faster to bring back up. And then if you look through, there's a link to the, what they mentioned in the release notes, but this idea called conditional negative balances, which is because some libraries want negative balances, it's sometimes some libraries want them not at all, so how you, how do you manage those? So there's a couple of times when patrons can get their accounts into the negative. And part of that comes with this bills that, you know, sometimes through credits or through being voided and coming back, the bill gets really crazy and you have to do all these, you know, add these bills, add a negative bill, add a positive bill, clear it out. But now it's a lot easier to just go into the patron's account, find that bill that, I mean, this isn't exactly a crazy bill, I just added it for a test. But you can go to the bill and instead of having to go to full details and do all these quick little, you know, void this or add this bill, you can simply go to actions for selected transactions and adjust to zero. And that'll take the bill and mark its balance to zero and take it off of the account. So that is a new option we have now for bills.
Brent, could you show us what that looks like in the history?
Yeah.
Is that retained in there?
So that was that $12. And it has a name of manual adjustment.
Okay.
An account, and it'll tell who did that adjustment, so you can have a record of that as well.
And you can edit that note if you need, I see.
Yeah, you can also edit the note for what you want it to say.
Okay.
Got that. There are also other options to just completely remove negative balances. And that's kind of a combination of library settings that's if, if libraries are interested in kind of erasing any of, any option that a patron has for getting a negative balance on their account, I think it would be best to probably just let Beth or I know, and we can try it out since it is a combination of settings to make sure that we have that working properly. But there is a way to get it so that no patrons receive those negative balances anymore on their accounts. Which I think is really nice. Patrons can now see that expiration date that we showed earlier in their accounts. They log in. I'll just log into my account. See it right there. All right. And now, when you're in the staff client, sometimes the book jacket image might be incorrect, or you feel that you know, something has changed and you want to make sure that it's grabbing the correct ISBN number from there as a match. You can go now when you're into the item record, we have this option, clear added content cache. And what that is, is refreshing the image that is set right here, querying server to make sure that we have the most recent one. So the first thing to try maybe before sending a ticket in or letting Beth and I know, is to go to the record and click on that tab or click on that link. And it will check it and clear it. Which, in this case, it's not going to do anything because it's the correct image, but have that there. And also, it wasn't there before, but there's a permalink option, which if you want to give, if a patron wants a link to that record that doesn't have all the extra added bits on the URL, you can click on that and it'll put it in a pasteboard. Oops. It's more for the patrons. Go to this really quick to show you. Go here. Click on the permalink. Go here, click on the permalink. Oops. Maybe I need to think about that. Okay. So this is the permalink then for that item, which just basically is the record and it's scoped to that location you're at, which in this case, 211 is Hood River Library. So you'll see the Hood River items first. So, just that. And then for the Sage changes, which we can talk about because we've received some kind of comments back about them, is some new branding on the homepage for the help desk. Maybe it wasn't as clear last time what that button was doing, so they modified it so that when you click it, it'll take you to the ticket site, so you can make, create to take it right through Evergreen or right out of Evergreen. And we also have the logo now showing as opposed to the Evergreen logo. And then we also have, that received the most comments, is the titles when they're displaying are a trimmed down version of the 245 field. I know there was some comments back about where the, where's the GMD or some other options that are included in that 245. And we can definitely modify these and try to get them to display the best we can. But I also heard prior to the upgrade complaints about, especially when you look for a DVD or something like Breaking Bad or something that had a lot of extra information there, you would have an incredibly long title entry that kind of obscured the fact that you were looking for what you were looking for. So now, if we look for something, you'll notice there's not that, you know, sound recording or video recording, which is the GMD, or the extra authors, which I know some libraries might want back. So I was just kind of curious about what the thoughts were. I talked with a few Evergreen libraries that had done it this way, and their, the reason they did it was because clarity for the title. And you can see, for instance, if I go in here, that's what's displaying, but the Mark still has that, those extra fields there.
We talked about this during the staff meeting this morning, and some of the staff here at Baker felt like the loss of that GMD, especially in cases of the large print, was, it was not an improvement.
Okay.
They wanted to see that back.
Yeah.
There is the icons and such, but they felt like they at least, and probably the patrons too, really used that GMD designation.
Okay.
Okay. You don't think the icons is enough, then?
Right. Not by themselves.
So I guess...
Sometimes the icons are wrong.
Sometimes they are, yeah. We're trying to fix that.
Right.
For the, for the title field, as it displays in the search results and in the record, what do I, does anyone have a kind of, I guess, just what parts of the 245, would you like all of it to display or like Perry said, would it be beneficial to maybe have those entries and then also the GMD? Again, I'm not a cataloger. If there's someone here, maybe, aren't the RDA records not showing a GMD?
Eventually, the GMD will go away.
Okay.
Right now, sites have the choice to include it, especially since large print hasn't really been covered in the new Mark fields. So we've retained it. And we can certainly just display the GMD along with the title and leave all the extra stuff out so that, you know, we have that balance between a cluttered display and a maybe too brief display.
Yeah. I just, yeah, I want to make sure that libraries are seeing what they want to see and not just, you know, what happened. So I guess, were there any other thoughts? Did everyone, did anyone else like the additional statements of responsibility that were included there? Or any other fields that they missed, short of the GMD?
I remember getting a lot of complaints about the, all the additional authors being listed next to the movie titles. It kind of dragged down the display of the rest of the record. So I think initially, let's try adding the GMD back in and see where we go from there.
All right. Yeah. All right. I, okay, and just real quickly, there are, if I can jump out of the 2.9.1 field, there are some CIRQ projects going on. Mostly that has to do with bills, dialogues, and styling options. With regard to the bills, it kind of corresponds with the wording and the dialogues, just making sure that the bill language is clear. As well as the dialogues, I know I've worked with Perry on the new, the password reset message to make that a little clearer. As well as the styling options, we have some options to change, kind of how things are styled. I know, for instance, where is it? Can't remember the address right now. But on the self-check screen, to change the logout button and have that a little more prominently displayed perhaps at the bottom, so patrons don't miss it, that would obviously only apply to libraries that are using the self-check. But that was another styling option that we're kind of looking at, just kind of increasing the size of the buttons on the self-check display. Okay. With the logo, I was kind of with showing it in the staff client a little better, which we have. Okay. So with regards to item statuses, we have a bunch in Sage right now. So these are all possible item statuses within Evergreen. And I believe Hood River brought it up that, are there some of these that we could do without or that we possibly don't want to have on the list that maybe is just kind of too many? So I was just curious if there were any statuses that paper, that library staff have been saying that they never use or they want to make sure don't go off? For example, I think some of these might be custom added from EOU. I'm not, I, I don't know, I think...
Yeah, certainly the Summit ones can all go away. And then there are some additional ones that may have come over and be a duplication of another status. So I think we just have to kind of go through the list and select candidates for deletion.
Okay.
And see what people think. We can also pull reports to make sure there's nothing in those statuses as well.
Okay. I see, like Heidi mentioned that...
If there are, if there are items with that status, it won't let you delete it. Is that right?
Yeah, we, you wouldn't be able to delete it unless, we would have to change the item status if you wanted to delete the item. But, yeah, we could, I think the idea, the best idea would be to run a report to see actually how many items are in these status designations and if that's the correct status for them to be in. Kind of send that to the list serve. Obviously, we wouldn't get rid of available.
Are you able to adjust the sort order on those?
Uh, on this right in here?
Well, as they display in, yeah, in the dropdown menu.
Uh, I'm, hmm, I think at least, okay, when you're like in the copy editor, you mean, kind of Perry?
Yeah, right. Editing item attribute.
Yeah. Let's see, right quick.
So if we're able to identify which ones are most commonly used, it might be helpful to have those up at the top. I know some we have to scroll down, the being repaired.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like right now, it's going alphabetically, but then as soon as you go to the, the non-capitalized ones, it restarts with those.
Oh, got it. Yeah.
So we could fix the case and maybe have it at least be alphabetic.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
And get rid of extra ones.
Is that case sensitivity, you know, that creates some issues with sorting in other areas? Is that case sensitivity something that we can toggle on or off?
Um, we could look in...
Not that I've seen this. Yeah, I haven't seen a setting for it, but I could have missed it.
Yeah, and for something like that, I think that's ordered a little more deeply in the configuration, like those Pearl modules we're using in the backend. But, yeah, I know they have done some kind of ordering changes recently in other aspects of the cat, or the client. And some of this also will become moot when the web client actually comes out too, which will be nice. All right, and so with the survey results, I didn't have that on hand, but did you, did you want to speak at all about that a little, Beth? Or could you maybe?
I can. Yeah, I don't have that document ready, although I could get it, but given our timeframe, maybe that's something we could tackle at the next meeting. But basically, the cataloging mentors went through the patron survey to see what changes we could make to better serve the patrons. And we came across, of course, there's a wide variety within the patron survey results, some CIRQ-related, some that could be cataloging-related, some that it were just how things appeared on the WebOPAC, so more of a design issue. So we thought we would start addressing some of those things. Maybe it pertains to holds and how easy holds are to be placed in the system, which is more of a CIRQ ILL issue. Though maybe we could start tackling those and see if there's any improvements we could make so that things are just better for our patrons.
Yeah. And I think that also goes to some of the wording as well, the dialogues and in the Okay, and then Buzzie had asked this to be added to the agenda to allow rules, renewals when a patron hits their maximum fines threshold. So as it stands right now, if a patron does get to that maximum fines kind of limit and that alert comes up for them, they're not able to renew their items that they have So if they exceed their fines, maybe they hit $15, if you go to the patron exceed fines, they're not, the blacklist includes circulating, getting holds, having a hold fulfill, or also renewing items. And I think Buzzie was kind of curious if, when a patron does hit that maximum fine allow or threshold, that we could also allow them to just renew their items so they don't, you know, maybe accrue more fines than they need to while they're looking for those titles that have excessive fines already. But the thing with that is that it would be Sage-related or Sage-wide change, because anyone who hits that limit would have to, would get those blocks. So I guess was, we were just curious if anyone is opposed to or for allowing patrons to renew items once they fit that threshold?
I would be for that change. That seems sensible.
Yeah, I would be for that change as well. This is Beth.
Okay.
Heidi asks if staff can do an override. Yes, they can.
Yeah.
But patrons would be forced to call the staff if, I think many of them prefer to do their own renewals if they can on the OPAC.
Yeah.
Agreed.
So that seems at least like a...
I like that change.
And then, sorry, I realize this is a kind of packed agenda. Thank you, everyone, for kind of sitting through me blathering, but just wanted to touch on how a library can update their information within Evergreen. Say if you have an hour change or an address change or your library email changes, kind of your general, the one you have your notices sent out under or you use as a kind of info at or general email. So there are a couple places within the catalog or within the staff client that you can do that. And the first one is if you go to the admin menu, and you can do this as one of those logins that has CIRQ admin permission profile group for them. So those are generally most of the logins that end in admin, you know, HRC admin or, you know, BC admin, logins like that. And so you would go to the local administration and the closed dates editor. So for example, since I'm in a Hood River workstation, this is what comes up. But this is how you would set closed dates for libraries. So if you're not going to be open on Christmas or New Year's Day, setting the dates here will move the checkout date to the next day available if it does fall on this date, as well as not charging fines or targeting holds for your library on this date. And so the main way you'll want to do that is using these two options, the add single date and add multiple date. I don't generally recommend adding the detailed closing. That would be more for if you're going to be closed for an hour or so or something that's not a general day or two day. or something that's not a general day or two day. But it gets a little more complicated with how the fines are set when you use this setting. So generally, adding a single day closing and multiple day closing are the way to do that here. And just wanted to let people know about that.
Brent, I'm not sure, is everybody aware that this information is displayed when they click on the library's name in the catalog?
Oh, yeah, that's a good information as well. So for instance, we have the Harry Potter collection, and I can go to, I'll just do it in the catalog right now. So this information is pulled in when you click on one of these links, which are these generated information pieces about your library. So for example, since Perry's here, we can do Baker. So when we click on Baker, it tells you the opening hours, contact information, mailing address, as well as branch relationship. And so that is what a patron can see when they click on that link in the catalog there.
So I didn't see the closed dates on there, so I guess that's not something we're currently displaying
Yeah, I don't believe-
in that information piece, okay.
Yeah, it'll show the general days that you're closed, but it won't, it won't pop up with kind of those custom added ones.
Okay.
And so those are good things to set, as well as, and I'm not sure if this is available for everyone, but I just wanted to show you where it is in case you were curious. If we go to the server administration and organizational units, I'll have a dropdown of all our libraries. And I'll just use Baker again. So this is that information that we see when we click on the link here. That is what it's pulling the information from. So the info, email address, the phone number, all of that, as well as your hours of operation and your address. And with these addresses, the two most important ones to put are physical and mailing. Holds and ILL do show up in various parts of the catalog and the staff client, but the physical and the mailing ones are the ones that are most frequent to have those filled in. So that's just where you can make that change.
Right now, it's just Brent and I, for the most part, that make those changes.
Yeah, because there is the also option that we don't want someone to accidentally delete Baker, which would be a very bad idea. So we're kind of limiting that access.
And you can also change the visibility of whether one of the libraries is showing in the catalogs. That's kind of, kind of a big deal.
Yeah, that would be a bad idea. But that's just where that is set, and we can change that for you. Or if you notice when you are clicking on your link that it's incorrect, we can change that right away for you as well. And then I guess, getting to kind of the policy information. We haven't, I've been working on pulling in all our circulation loan rules, as long, as well as the hold policies and the loss rules. Basically, all the policies we have that kind of dictate how holds and circulations are fulfilled, or loss dates are set when that happens at a Sage level, as well as an individual library level. And they're pretty, we have a lot of them, and there's a lot of information on there. But I'm aggregating that together, and this week I'm going to send out a spreadsheet, as well as put that on the website with a kind of link to see the current loan rules and hold and loss rules that we have. And I'd like to kind of work with the committee to maybe figure out the best way to integrate those into the website. Those will be up. And so for our policies right now, we have, so I was going to update the loss book policy, and our loan rules need to get updated as well, as well as the circulation policy. For example, I'm not sure, I mean, we have the general kind of information here, but I believe this needs updating as well. Mention of Millennium, for example. Yeah, I was just wondering if there were maybe some brave souls here that would work with me and Beth to maybe kind of draft updates to the policy documents.
Each of these individually and
Yeah.
come up with additions or changes.
Very, very old one.
Yeah, they are, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Definitely time for review.
So I think, and part of that, we'll have to look at those, the loan and hold policy information that I have, because you kind of have to parse through it a little bit. But if there is a brave soul, or pair of souls, or more, would like to help us, I'd love to share that information with you and get started on kind of setting something up that we can put up for all the staff members to see.
Brent, are you referring to all of our unique settings beyond the standard loan rules? We, different libraries have their own set of policies for special materials?
Yeah, because there's the Sage standard ones, but then there's also, it's a Sage standard one, but if you happen to go to, I'm just not picking up, if you happen to go to Hood River, that rule does not apply, but it's a standard rule otherwise. Just kind of looking through all the different facets of those.
Okay.
But definitely, there are standards that we have to put back up. Just kind of bring that up. Yeah. Kind of just to fill in that information especially, to update it. Are there any people in the meeting now that might want to, at this point, volunteer for that, or if maybe not right now, emailing Beth or myself would be a great way to kind of lend a hand?
If I can find the time, I would like to, I'll try to put that in my to-do list.
Okay.
I think once we iron out exactly what we're working on at any given time, we might get some volunteers for individual type of things that we're working on. Right now, it's kind of a broad idea of what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
It can be a little overwhelming.
I think maybe the first-
Break it down.
Yeah, first good step would be to just kind of go through the existing documentation and see what can be updated and what needs to go away or be added. Just looking at the existing material.
Okay.
And a good way to get people involved is to propose radical changes.
True. There's incentive.
Okay. All right, and then, so that's good. And I'll be sending out some information about that as well, so you can see what the policies look like right now. Okay, and then, a while back, I sent out an email regarding our analytics that we're starting to trial for Sage. And we actually have them set for the Sage Libsite, as well as the catalog. So we have analytics running on both those sites. So right now, if you log in, you can kind of see all this information live happening right now. Kind of see what people are accessing the catalog with, where they're accessing the catalog, how they get there through the referral websites, as well as what's happening in real time. Like somebody just opened a link to the catalog from Baker. There's also analytics to kind of look at. Oh, sorry.
Is that also going to have access data from the staff clients?
Yes, or sorry, no, it will not in the staff client. The reason for that is that there's too much possibility of personal information leaking. That that's been disabled. But this is for anyone that goes to any of the catalog.sage or other custom names there. So BMCC, or BCL, or Baker, et cetera. It will aggregate that here. So kind of just a real brief overview, when you go to the page, you'll see this kind of landing dashboard, which shows you those things I kind of mentioned. There's not going to be much before December 28th, because that's when we enabled it. But kind of the best way to look at it would be to go to the Visitors tab, like I had, and just kind of looking through these individual broken out ones. And also, you see how it has information here for the 12th. We can also set a range, so I could set that from all the way back. And we can see kind of the evolution over that time. Has a visitor log to see what people are actually searching for when they go there. So there's some searches for, I'm not sure what that is exactly. Adventure Time, Prayers for Sale. So these are kind of what people are inputting when they're searching the catalog. Kind of see what people access the catalog with. Some information about the brand, even the resolution of the screen. The operating systems and browsers that are used, as well as where people are accessing the catalog from. So we can see we even have people from Idaho, California coming in. The Dalves.
I'm seeing 11 from Asia, that's kind of cool.
Yeah, Japan had a few visits there. Someone from Brazil wanted a book. And as well as engagement, which is kind of what people do when they come to the site. So we can see how many pages the patron will go to when they visit the site, and how long they stay there. And there's a lot to kind of work through, I haven't even gone through all of it myself. But there's a lot to see, the actions. That won't tell you too much, that's just kind of where people go to when they get here. The page titles that they come to. Hood, Baker, La Grande, Hermiston, Lake County, Pendleton, Boardman, Ontario, et cetera. What people are searching for. And the refers. But yeah, that's kind of what we saw on the main page, what people are coming to the site from. Yeah, and there's, we also have the option with this to generate reports. So we're going to be looking into that, kind of what might be the most relevant material to kind of pull from these reports. And since everyone's here right now, I was kind of curious, what types of information you think might be interesting to know about how patrons interact with the catalog? Would you like to know search terms, or? I don't know, I'm just trying to think of what might be an interesting, some interesting information that we can grab.
Brent, off the top of my head, I think search terms possibly. Knowing what is popular and maybe featuring that. Obviously, Star Wars is pretty popular today, or yesterday, that was yesterday's search result.
Yeah, I thought search terms might be kind of the most interesting or relevant for kind of libraries to look at. And we can definitely have an evolution over time to see what people search for, I don't know, in February as opposed to January, or something like that. But right now, it's just kind of more fun to see who's coming and what's looking at, what patrons are looking at when they get there. And if you did want access to that, the login permissions, once you get to, once you get to sage.org statistics, the login is just simply view stats and view stats as well. That's the login and password. Okay. I guess we can kind of go to an open forum right now, if there's maybe some items or things that people would like to talk about that weren't covered.
This is Perry. We're still seeing that the issue with duplicate display of items in our case with multiple branches has not been resolved. So I'm wondering if that's something that Sage can put development money towards moving along?
I'm glad you mentioned that, Perry, because I have talked with, let me just go in right now. So I posted that. So I posted that, sorry. So I posted that bug, I think, a year ago. that duplicate initial search results you were mentioning. And it's since gotten a lot of heat, actually, which is kind of, which is good in the community. And a lot of comments. And one of the core developers is mentioning what the problem actually is in kind of developer talk. And he's proposed a few changes for how that can be modified. But I think it might be a good idea to kind of alert them that we have maybe some money that, or some other incentive that we can use to kind of poke development on that a little bit. Because I know that is kind of an issue.
Yeah, that'd be great, since it's taken over a year.
yeah, I would like to ask them to help us work on that with some. I know, I know, Lake County has mentioned that, as well as Hood River. Kind of basically, it affects all libraries that have multiple branches the most. So so it sounds like we could get some kind of help from Baker, and Lake County mentioned that. They did as well. yeah, if you like, I can include you, Perry. And Beth, I think it might be a good idea to kind of send an email out to at least those libraries initially, and seeing kind of what we can gather to kind of contribute towards a development on the fix.
And if we still have a budget line item for development? Or when we put together next year's budget, keeping something like this in mind, too?
Well, last time we had development, did we get a quote? And then, and then, it seems like we had more money than it actually cost to put towards the issue last time.
I remember some offers of money. I guess I'm trying to picture the quote. But you remember us getting a quote from somebody?
No, I don't know whether they give us a quote, or whether they just give us a bill at the end.
Okay. Well, maybe we can talk with the developers and see what it would take to make this happen faster. Maybe get a price tag from them.
Yeah, and the person that mentioned what the problem was and the options for fixing it, he's the, I believe Mike is the president of Equinox now.
Yeah, yeah, he is.
So if that was developed, could that be plugged in once it's ready? Or does it have to wait for a next evergreen release?
If we pick it, we get it right away.
Yeah.
It's tested.
Okay.
And we could kind of also act as a test case for that being put into the, put into the general code set for future releases. Which I think everyone would like, judging by the amount of people that indicate it's an issue. Okay. I guess some action items, I guess we can kind of, or does anyone else have anything that they would like to mention that wasn't discussed? I don't want to exclude anybody here.
I was just remembering something from, that came up at the council meeting. And it might be worth bringing up here, since we didn't get a survey sent out concerning increasing the number of renewals.
Okay, I'm trying to remember, Beth, was it, didn't we raise that, the renewal limit, generally?
We haven't yet. We had some discussion at the council meeting. And we're going to poll the libraries as to how they felt about increasing it from the current three to a larger number. And I can look at the minutes to see what that number was, but I'm thinking it was maybe five or six, but Just something to kind of get people thinking. We're still going to send out that survey. But it's just one of the things that we wanted to kind of poll the circ folks, too, since they're directly involved.
So I guess, Okay, so the kind of action items right now are to increase the number of renewals and send out a survey about that. And talk to Equinox about what a quote would be for a duplicate fix for that issue.
I think I'd be comfortable with four renewals. Beyond that, I think, I mean, that's having an item out three months, at three weeks each.
And I know there have been instances where staff can override those renewals and they'll go into the negative numbers on occasion.
But that number of renewals is standard regardless of the loan period, whether it's one week or three weeks, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So Brent, did you want to add four in the mix of things that we'll ask folks about? So that you can see where people's comfort levels are?
Yeah. That seems kind of the range. I don't imagine there will be requests for it to be over six, because that kind of just sounds like infinity.
Does, and my guess is we won't get too many votes for six.
Yeah, we can send out a poll survey with those options, as well as perhaps an other.
You probably have this on your to-do list, but I've noticed that the 999 Mark field is not included in the templates yet, after the upgrade.
Oh, it's not?
Okay, we will check the Mark templates. Thanks, Perry. There were a couple of settings that we talked about during the meeting. The 30-day account expiration notice. Setting that at the Sage level, there was general agreement on that. Also allowing renewals when the patron hits max finds. And we're going to pull a report of statuses being used and look at statuses that we could delete.
Yeah, I think that, thanks for that, Beth. I think that looks like most of it right now.
And our next meetings, I mean, we had a lot to cover today. But I think we can start breaking things out more and have maybe focus on one or two, three key things.
And I'm also glad to hear from everyone that they're able to access the evergreen, all right? Just kind of making sure about that also from the meeting. Yeah, I'm also, later this weekend, I'll post a kind of walkthrough of the new features in a little more depth, so we don't have to kind of spend more time talking about it in the circulation committee meeting.
Hey, Beth, since we're in the budget season, maybe we should talk about that novelist supplementary content and get people's idea of whether they want to pursue that as an added subscription.
Yeah, so look at getting a quote again for what it would cost for all of Sage to have that, or?
Yeah, yeah, and people can look at our public catalog to get an idea of what that looks like.
It's a very nice feature. I would love it for all of Sage, but maybe they'll give us a better quote this time.
All right, well, I'd like to thank everyone who came to the committee meeting today. And we'll get those minutes up soon. Thanks, Beth, for offering to do that as well. And I'll put in the calendar on sage.org the next meeting time, which right now looks like February 10th at 10:00. And I'll send out reminders about that as well. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming for this hour and a half meeting.
All right, thank you, Brent.
Thanks, Brent.
Thank you.